Hi. Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
I was commenting a little while ago to a couple of individuals, a couple of councilors and also dentists that I believe this is our sixth in-person meeting in a year and a half. So I think we're doing very well.[36.01][36.01](Laughter). So anyways, welcome to the Lewson City Council. I'm going to open up the meeting and once I open it up, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, if I may. So here we are. We're opening up the meeting and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion from Representative -- Councilor Calley and Councilor Clements, second motion. All in favor? Let's go.
Opposed.
All right, here we are. We're back. And now we're going to move on to a workshop. And the workshop is basically to discuss a request from the town of Sabatys for sewer service connection. And...
Yes, so the Public Works Director will be happy to present that for you. And as she's getting set up, Mr. Council President, we just wanted to let the council know that for some reason, we are not live streaming on YouTube right now as intended.
Okay.
So our IT department is currently working on that issue and hoping to have that resolved by 7:00. But no guarantees. They tested the system this afternoon and it was working fine. But currently, it's not working, but they're actively working on that to get that up and running. So should you hear from any of your constituents, we are aware that we're not currently broadcasting on YouTube as we usually are. And we're currently working on it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kathy. Yes. And we are ready for your portion of the presentation.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen and women. I'm here just to discuss an opportunity that came to us from the Sabatys Cemetery District. They had reached out to us in December to look at the feasibility of their wastewater flow coming into our system. And again, it would get treated at Lopka. But looking at the feasibility of that has a lot of different complicated pieces. So over the last six months, we've been discussing with their consultant, Bill Oliver, and the trustees, and also the staff, of what are some of the pieces and what would that take? You know, how would they connect to our system? What would it affect? And the engineering part of it is very easy. You know, they would come in, it would be a force meeting, they'd update our pump station. But because we're already a CSO community, where we already have systems that we need to improve upon, we still need to have things that we need to fix. So they may still be able to cover some of those expenses as well. So there's a connection fee that happens, and then there's a rate that would happen. So when you look at the engineering projects, they could be expanded to a little bit more of a sewer master plan or possibly a rate study. So there's different pieces would all be part of that first connection fee. And then later, it would be just like an industrial customer. They'd be like a customer. So there's lots of pieces to that, and we've gotten some sample agreements from Bill Oliver. But really feel like we need our own consultant to look from our own lens for the best interests of what we have for our citizens and ratepayers. So we put in a request back to them back in April to fund a consultant for us and to look at the staff's time for making this a priority in our schedule and to have legal review. And they came back with a long response that I attached to your packets about, can we just kind of go a little ways into this agreement and come up with a number? And my concern with that is the number is then going to be a number that is set in someone's mind. And we may not have done our due diligence. So when, you know, I look at that response, I think there's more questions. And so we have received the sample documents. Bill Oliver is a respectful consultant. You know, I think that he's doing good work for Sabatys. But I think that we need someone looking from our lens. And, you know, I'd like to, you know, just kind of talk through any questions that you have. But as a staff with, you know, Kevin and Jeff and myself, kind of looking at how would we dig into this to look at questions we don't even know some of the answers to? Because once you become, this is a long-term agreement. It's not like an industrial customer where you, you know, shut them off if things aren't working out. You can't do that. So one thing that we do know is the Sabatys trustees do want to, you know, continue this conversation. Before we made it public, we let them know that we would be having this workshop so that they could go public with their own residents. There's 600 residents that would be coming into the system. So we realize it's a small community. 50,000 that we're requesting to be put in an account for us to draw from is a big amount to them. And they really wanted to come back with this counter offer of 20,000 or not to exceed, using their own consultant. So I feel like, you know, I've posed some questions in there that we still have. Can we charge a different rate? You know, what are some of the particulars about long-term uncertainties? How do we find the right wording to, you know, protect our future generations? We've been talking about agreements, you know, many, many times. So just kind of looking at not only, you know, the legal aspects, but the experience from other users, learning lessons from MOUs that may have been created by other municipalities before, and trying to look at those unseen circumstances, similar to like the PFAS in the sewer world. You know, that's something, we don't know what we're going to have for costs and that.
Right.
So the flow is little, and the engineering is pretty easy part. We can come up with projects and a connection fee. It's the long-term agreement that has a lot of questions. And we feel like we shouldn't put a number on something until we know what more of those long-term questions are. And, you know, just really kind of been kicking this around for six months. So we wanted to bring it, you know, also to the ratepayers as well as to you to look for, you know, answering questions and helping us think deeper and, you know, come up with the next steps of just, I feel like, a slow, steady pace, you know?
Yes, Alicia.
Thank you for that presentation, Director Wrenchak. I think one concern that immediately pops into my mind is that our Water Pollution Control Authority is already a shared system with Auburn. Would they have to be part of these negotiations?
No, they would be a customer of ours. And so...
Because we would charge Sabatys directly. And then, just because I only know how it works in Lewiston, how do smaller towns such as Sabatys, I mean, I guess other towns like Wales, how do they deal with their sewer districts?
Well, everybody does it differently. You know, that was going to be my answer, right?
Pretty much.
But what has really brought this on for Sabatys is that, you know, the stats changed. The regulations changed that phosphorus coming from Sabatys Lake were increased, and they didn't meet it with the treatment that they have. So they need to build a new treatment plant or tie into Lewiston. Their new treatment plan has a price tag of 12,000, 12 million, not 12,000, 12 million. And so it's pretty hefty, and they want to look at alternatives. So they're looking at that, would we be less than 12 million? They're still going to need to deal with the uncertainties, no matter what.
I would say 50,000 is a heck of a lot less than 12 million.
Well, I know. We'll come back with millions, believe me. But, you know, it's really kind of looking at what's the right impact, and it's an investment. So if what we're asking them to do with this 50,000 to cover a consultant for us is we could put that in that connection fee, and they could fund it later. But they need to borrow from Peter to pay Paul right now. If they wanted us to look into this deeper, they need to figure that part out. And then we'll be reasonable. We'll, you know, only use what we need. Certainly be collaborative discussions, but really with somebody representing, again, our lens and our perspective. And another thing to consider is that they would still, in their proposal, they would still have their own pump stations, their own piping in their own town, their own billing to customers. And so we're not sure that's the best scenario for us either. We'd want to look at that. Because we can't, we can't set ordinances there. We can't set rules. You know, what about their growth, containing their growth? What kind of businesses that they would bring in? You know, is it a chicken farm? What is it? You know, there's different wastes that come from all of that and also potential risk. So all of those kind of things, pre-treating even, maybe, that we need to look at in a, you know, in a deeper scope. And I think that all identifies the true cost. You know, what is this cost?
I do have a question. The 600, does that mostly take care of the surrounding lake area in Sabatys?
It's the complete customer base.
Yeah, they're all hooked up on the city's sewerage system.
I'm not sure the percentage that are on treatment, you know, their own septic systems.
I know that the water system, city water system, it was not a mandatory action that each one of them sign up on it. They could stay on their well. But I do believe that the ones around the lake area, the closest to the lake area, or even across the street somewhat, had to go onto the sewerage system. So I'm just wondering how many, I mean, it might be 300, I'm not sure. And then you have the others that are involved. I don't know if there's any factories there or any chicken barns or anything.
I think there's a lot of industrial. There's just more of us looking into that. And even the pump stations, what condition are they in? What if one's failing? What happens?
You don't know that.
Right.
Because the other thing that I read on the information you sent us, you stated that Sabatys would do all the maintenance and upkeep on their portion of the equipment that they currently have. So...
And they still need to upgrade their treatment plant to something, whether it's storage or pre-treatment. So there's still money that they're calculating to what that would be. So I can understand what they want an answer, so to speak.
Yeah, right. So do we, how much, how much, how much pressure would it put? I don't know if pressure is the proper word, but how much pressure would it put on our system? Would it be a great amount or insignificant?
It's a minor, insignificant amount of flow. And then the rates, once they connect, would be really a pass-through to Lopka. We're just paying the fees, you know?
Right.
So...
And what we would do is we would, according to the memo again, it looks like we'd be charging per gallon coming across.
Yeah, there'd be meter, there'd be a meter pit. It would be metered right at that.
That's right. And then it would be up to the city, the town of Sabatys to distribute that cost in some form to whomever is hooked up.
Depending on how they fund their full package of what they need to do for upgrades. And one thing that, to be clear, it's a compliance issue for them. Anything that we do to connect with their sewer doesn't help Sabatys Lake. It doesn't help Sabatys River, unfortunately. You know, so it really is just about compliance.
Right.
And again, we had a meeting with DEP, which was the different areas of DEP. There was five or six people from different regions and different, you know, responsibilities in DEP that had a joint call with all of us, and they were supportive. You know, they know what status we were at and what work we need to do. But we still feel like more communication needs to happen between just Lewiston and DEP. You know, what does that mean for us, for future?
Right. So that would be all of their sewerage capacity. Nothing on the Sabatys side would be released other than into the line, main line.
Correct, correct, yeah. And you can, you can put a maximum number of gallons to try to control growth. But that doesn't control what type of growth they have.
Right, right.
Thank you, Mr. President. It sounds like we still have a lot of questions that we need to get answered. And in order to do a proper cost-benefit analysis, we, you know, probably need to have a consultant. So as far as guidance goes, I'm absolutely supportive of heading in that direction. The memo was very thorough, by the way, and I very much liked the discussion points you had here. And even like the questions you bring up, you know, we're just not in a place to answer those, so... And as far as the $50,000 amount, it seems reasonable to me, given the cost of everything that could be involved.
Peanuts.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd, you know, leave it up to you how you want to approach that. But to me, 50,000 seems reasonable.
Yeah, we acknowledge it's a small community. We want to be good neighbors. We want to help. We just need to look at, you know, the long-term pieces to all of this. And like I said, the engineering's easy. It's really the verbiage in, you know, doing the best job we can at that. So we will work with them, and everything would be mutually, you know, discussed along the way as well.
Yeah, that sounds great. I do like the idea of working with, you know, regional partners, and especially Lewiston as a service center community where a lot of our nonprofit organizations will benefit the region, you know, including residents of Sabatys. So I hope that can kind of play into our discussion as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would concur that we want to be good neighbors. They are a small community, but our obligation is to the city of Lewiston. If they're willing to put the money up for the study, I say 50,000 is a lot better than 12 million. And I'm sure they'll recognize that. But I don't think we should be extending anything. Perhaps, you know, initially, we'll cover the cost until you can get it up and running. But I don't think we should be funding any part of the cost of bringing this into fruition, so, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, President. I guess I'm curious about, even if we said we wanted them to do the thorough $50,000 study, that's still their consultant. So you talked earlier about the need for it to be kind of both-sided.
We would hire our own consultant, and we have master service contracts that we would, we would use for that. So Tygen Bond is our consultant that we would use for our water system, sewer system, water and sewer, actually.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Councilor Clement? Yes.
Thank you. I'm wondering, can, can, you know, we, can we hire our own consultant as well as use their consultant to somehow lower the 50,000?
Yes, and Dan Beeson is our consultant working with Tygen Bond. He's on vacation. Else we would have had an estimate. So he did meet with us on our waterline project going under the bridge and just kind of looked at the discussion. But he couldn't put anything in writing because he was set it out on vacation. So we will get something before, and I think before I even respond back, I would like to have that estimate in hand. Because yes, we've used the agreements that, you know, Bill Oliver has given us. Like I said, he's reputable. He can certainly facilitate some conversations with the trustees. So some of that will save some costs.
Perfect, thank you. That's all.
Good.
Always have more questions. Can you remind us how our sewer district is governed in Lewiston?
So it's part of Public Works for the conveyance until we get to the treatment part of it, which is the commission or the authority.
Okay. We don't have a sewer district trustees or anything like that?
No, we don't, yeah. We're talking with the clerks today, just trying to define territory somewhere. But because we didn't create ourselves as a district separate from Public Works, it could be, we think anyway, it could be any customer. They don't have to live in the city of Lewiston. But it has to, you know, benefit and be transparent to the residents. So we were looking at that territory. Norm Lady had asked the question.
I appreciate the staff recommendation and information, but I was like, oh, is there a board or commission that could weigh in on this as well? But understand, I'm definitely supportive of the plan moving forward. Yeah, definitely see if we can be good friends with our neighbors.
Well, and we still have discussions with the board, the Lopka Board, the Pollution Control Authority about what future programs do they have, and would there be a percentage of cost that is related to this as a connection fee? So we are looking and discussing that with them after we decide how it relates to us.
Okay.
So that they're part of that connection fee.
Who represents Lewiston on that board, then?
Me.
Okay.
Jeff Bulley.
And who represents Auburn on that board?
Dan Goyette. Who else is from Lewiston, Auburn? I'm not sure.
It's the superintendent of the Auburn Water District and the director of Public Works from Auburn.
Okay, so they have three members and we have two?
Nope. They have two, and we have two.
Two and two, okay.
A consultant and a resident.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? We all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're all set.
So the council can certainly stand in recess until 7:00 PM. We can't start the official meeting until 7:00 PM.
I was just going to suggest, yeah, I was going to suggest a little recess until 7:00, and then we'll go into our regular council meeting. Very good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I will be opening up the 7 o'clock regular council meeting. Uh, the first thing on the agenda would be the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, let me get my trusty down here. Okay, so, uh, this evening, Kathy, all roll calls will begin with?
All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the counselor of Word 7. And we'll also note for the record that the mayor does have an excused absence this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next up is we have the introduction of the 2021, 2022 Lewiston Youth Advisory Council members. And I believe Dottie's going to come up. And Counselor Jensen is going to assist to introduce the individuals.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you very much. It's nice to be in person. It seems so different, but great. Uh, with me this evening, I have Counselor Luke Jensen. He and I and the outgoing chair of the youth council recently interviewed, uh, six new applicants for the 21-22 season. And they're also going to be, uh, joining, returning six other council members who, five of them are here this evening. And we just lost eight seniors, uh, which is a big loss. They all graduated. I just wanted to, uh, mention their names because they've done a wonderful job over their tenure. Outgoing Chair Hope Ribeto, outgoing, um, vice chair Katie Moran, outgoing, uh, let's see, no, I guess it was all the officers there. Elena Clathier, Damon Dewitt, Julia Parquette, Olivia DeShanes, Ariana Valli, and Ade Abdi. And they've just done a great job. So, we're going to miss them. And they're all headed off to various colleges. So, before I do all the names, um, Counselor Jensen, I know you want to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dottie. Um, as far as the, the outgoing seniors go, um, we absolutely owe you guys an amazing, uh, debt of gratitude. In a year that was tough for literally everybody in the world, um, you guys didn't really drop the ball. You kept up a lot of what you were doing and the efforts. Um, it showed so much more than you guys probably realized. You brought a lot of joy and, and good things to the community in a very, very tough time. And, um, we are absolutely grateful for you guys and your service to the city at such a young age. So, thank you. And, um, regarding the new, uh, members coming in, um, it was an honor to sit in those interviews. It was absolutely wonderful. There were some great ideas for the city, some great vision, a lot of passion that a lot of our young people have. Um, it really gave me a lot of hope too, after seeing that too. And just, it's a tough world. It's tough in, you know, public, uh, discussion. And to see these young people with such awesome passion and ideas for the city and just love for Lewiston, it's, it's awesome. It's really cool to see. So, the city is in good hands as far as our young people go.
Thank you. And I also wanted to note that we have the official grandmother of the youth council here tonight. Uh, we had a recent outing at her home. She invited the youth council out. And Jenny, why don't you stand up? Um, our outgoing chair gave her a shirt, the official grandmother of the LYAC. So, she's wearing that proudly tonight. So, without further ado, I'm going to, uh, introduce the returning folks first. Um, if you could just come up and maybe make a line over to the side after you get your certificate. The first person is Riley Emmer. She's also the city's poet laureate. Maybe a little line, we can get a picture over towards the easel. Okay. Uh, next we have Emily, Emily Fornier, who did a lot of photography work for us this year.
Thank you.
Yep. Bree Matthew. And Cadence and Alyssa Netto, our sisters. Cadence is headed to a college tour, but this is Alyssa and she's taking for both. And then Kiara Potvin. And now, we're going to start with the new. The first person who, um, I must say in our interviews was a spitfire. We just all woke up with all of her energy. Her name is Hannah Arsenal. Come on up. Hannah, welcome to the youth council.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. And El Zach? There you go. And I'm going to say this wrong, but it's Charme Khalid, and he had a soccer game. So, he's not here, but we will get that to him. Omar Osen? Abashadad? I got to work on these names, let me tell you. And then the last new person is Nafisa Tasneer. And she emailed me this afternoon and she's not feeling well. So, she wasn't able to be here tonight. But welcome. And I wanted to share with the group, um, some of the ideas that the new folks had for this year, things on their mind, is the importance of community, homelessness, addressing shortages such as food insecurity and access to mental and physical health services, the environment, keeping Lewiston clean, uh, a need for downtown unity, bridging cultures, and helping the community run smoothly. Those were all things that they shared in their interview. And those that are returning, uh, said that they wanted to showcase, uh, Lewiston's offerings and their potential as they have been doing. So, it sounds like it will be a great year. So, without further ado, uh, we'll go across the hall and get some pictures for the website.
Yeah. He's in college, though. Uh, he might actually be out.
Well, that was great. Uh, we'll continue. Um, the next item is the acceptance of the minutes for the June 15th and the June 22nd, 2021 meetings.
Mr. President, I move we accept them as prepared.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Clement.
Second.
A second. Counselor Kellard?
Are we all set, Kathy?
Sure, we can do a roll call vote. Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
And Word 6?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Very good. Our next item, uh, is public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding to issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. Three minutes per speaker. A maximum time for, uh, the alightment, uh, for the comments is 15 minutes. And it does, it cannot have anything to do with this evening's meeting. So, do we have any public comments? I'll ask one more time. Any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to, uh, the regular business.
Sure. Item number 1, public hearing on application for a new liquor license and special amusement permit for live entertainment for Obscura 108 Lisbon Street. Requested action to authorize the city clerk's office to approve a new liquor license application and special amusement permit for Obscura 108 Lisbon Street.
So moved.
Second, the motion.
Uh, we have a motion by Counselor Ray and a second by Counselor Clement. Okay, we'll go to the council for discussion. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to the public. No discussion from the public. Back to the council. Okay, would you call for a roll call vote?
Sure. Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
And Word 6?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Next item, number 2?
Item number 2, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Acme Social Club Incorporated, 255 Park Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Acme Social Club Incorporated, 255 Park Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jensen and a second by Counselor Kellard. Okay, we'll go to the council for discussion. No discussions? Okay. Public? Any discussions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go back to the council. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please, Kathy?
Sure. Counselor from Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application from Lewiston Rowing for the outdoor concerts to be held at Samarid Payne Memorial Park on July 23rd through 26th, and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to Lewiston Rowing for the outdoor concerts contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Land Use Officer, and Code Health Officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances. So moved.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion from Counselor Ray and a second from Counselor Gen Alis. Yeah. Gen Alis.
Delightous.
I'm having trouble with my tongue.
Call me a name.
Okay. To the council for discussion. Seeing none, to the public for discussion. And we don't have anybody in the public for discussion. So we'll go back to the council for a roll call vote.
Counselor from Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
Yes.
Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
And Word 6.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, item number 4.
Item number 4, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for a musical concert in Kennedy Park. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event in Kennedy Park, and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, for an outdoor music concert to be held at Kennedy Park on Saturday, July 31st, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances. So moved.
Second.
Okay, item number 4.
Item number 4, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for a musical concert in Kennedy Park. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event in Kennedy Park, and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, for an outdoor music concert to be held at Kennedy Park on Saturday, July 31st, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances. So moved.
Second.
A motion of Counselor Ray and a second from Counselor Gen Alis. Ah, I'm getting better, Ronna. That's very good. Thank you. Do we have any discussion from the council? Go ahead.
Can I just say how excited I am? The children's librarian, Sarah Turner, did that wonderful Lewiston read, and now is bringing music as part of their position to the library. And I'm just super thrilled and want everyone to know it.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Ray. Anyone else?
I was just going to say the same thing. Just really excited to see this type of energy going on again, to be outside, to be enjoying his groups. And so, kudos to Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gen Alis. Okay. If no more from the council, we'll go to the public. Comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, back to the council. And we see nothing, so a roll call vote. Kathy?
Sure. Counselor from Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
Yes.
Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
Word 6.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Okay, item number 5.
Item number 5, public hearing and final passage for amendments to the election ordinance regarding the creation of an affidavit of residency. Requested action that the proposed amendment to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32 Elections, Article 1 in general, Section 32-5, affidavit of residency, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion from Counselor Jensen and a second from Counselor Clements. Questions from the council? Yes, Counselor Ray.
So a question for the City Clerk. Given that this is possibly ratified tonight, at what point would it go into effect?
Sure. It's an ordinance amendment, so it would go into effect 30 days after final passage, so 30 days from tonight.
Okay. And in the prescribed language, it talks about no later than the closing date for the receipt of nomination papers, this affidavit of residency would need to be filed. And so, folks running for the November election will have to abide by this.
Correct. And that filing date is Friday, September 3rd.
Thank you. And then, I will just note my objection again. I believe it should be incredibly easy for folks to seek elected office, and I think adding this extra step is just a redundancy.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Anyone else on the council? Hearing and seeing none, comments from the public? Seeing no comments from the public, back to the council. No further comments, roll call vote. Kathy?
Sure. Counselor from Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
No.
Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
And Word 6.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 6 to 1.
Item number 6.
Item number 6, amendment to policy manual number 6, the rules governing the City Council. Requested action to approve the proposed amendment to the rules governing the City Council, policy manual number 6. So moved.
Second the motion.
Motion by Counselor Ray, second, I believe, by Counselor Clements. Okay. Any comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Ray.
Just for the public's information, when would this go into effect?
Sure. So this is part of our policy manual, so it would go into effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you so much.
No further comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at this, looking at a section, actually, excuse me, looking at just, it looks like a first subject, Section H here, which is the part that was added in. The language, I might just have been reading it wrong, but it seemed a little bit confusing. Does it say that the mayor and the councilors all cannot use cell phones, or is it just restricts councilors? To me, it kind of reads as the mayor doesn't have to abide by that policy as well. And I didn't know if that was the case.
The, just to, I'll read the second sentence in that, what you're talking about there, is the councilor's cell phones, tablets of councilors, and, yeah, cell phones and tablets. So some grammatical there. The councilor's cell phones and tablets of councilors and the mayor should be turned off during the city council meeting unless the council mayor has obtained approval from either the mayor or the city council president, in the case of the mayor, before the meeting. So it is a little, maybe a little, you know, yeah, there we go. Maybe a little, could be some word smithing there. But yes, it does, to answer your question, that would include the mayor, based on what I'm reading there, that they would, he would have to, the mayor would have to follow the same rules, the councilor and the mayor.
Okay. All right, awesome. Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, and then, should we make a motion right now to eliminate the word councilors, the second word in that sentence, or it just says?
Yeah.
The cell phones and tablets of councilors and the mayor should be turned off during city council meetings unless the, you know, with getting the exception.
Yes. That would be a good amendment to just clarify that, that sentence.
Yeah. Okay. In that case, I'd move that amendment.
Okay.
The amendment?
Second?
I would second the amendment.
Okay. Second from Counselor Ray and the initial to move from Counselor Jensen. The man. Okay, any further discussion from the council? I don't see any. How about the public? No one in the public as well. Back to the council.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So this is going to read in effect, then, that the cell phones and tablets of the council and mayor. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, no further discussion, we'll go for a roll call vote.
Great. So the first item you'll be voting on is to delete the word councilors in the second paragraph, second sentence in paragraph H on page 7. So it would be to delete the word councilors. Counselor from Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
Yes.
Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
Yes.
And Word 6.
Question for clarification.
Sure.
Are we voting on the amendment or?
You're voting on the amendment.
Amendment first and then on the change of rules, right?
Yes.
Okay, for the amendment, yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor. So a motion passes by a vote of 7 to 0. So now, the motion before you is to approve the proposed amendments, as amended, as changed, to the rules governing the City Council, City Policy Manual number 6. I'll set for a roll call vote on that, Mr. President.
Yes, I'll set.
Thank you. Counselor from Word 7.
Yes.
Word 1.
Yes.
Word 2.
Yes.
Word 3.
Yes.
Word 4.
Yes.
Word 5.
I had another comment I wanted to make, so I'll abstain.
Okay. And Word 6.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed by vote of 6 to 0.
Okay. Moving on, number 7, item 7 is a condemnation hearing for the building located at 1845 House Street. We do have city legal representation. Could you come up, please? Okay. Attorney Kerry, please introduce the item, and we can go for discussion after that.
My, we have your own mic, just on the other side. There we go. Right there, Michael. Thank you. My name is Michael Kerry. I'm the city attorney for the city of Lewiston. The council is meeting this evening to conduct a hearing to determine whether the structure at 145 House Street is a nuisance or dangerous building within the meaning of the applicable main statute found in Section 2851 of Title 17 of the main MEBI statutes, and whether the structure poses a serious threat to public health and safety within the meaning of 28, Section 2856 of that title, and must be secured. If the council makes either determination, it will then determine what actions the property owner must take. Under Section 2851, a structure or any part thereof is a nuisance or dangerous building if it is quote, "structurally unsafe, unstable, unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, is unsuitable or improper for the use or occupancy to which it is put, constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment, or is otherwise dangerous to life or property." Under Section 2856, a municipality has the right to secure buildings that pose a serious threat to public health and safety. These are the standards that you will use to decide whether the structure is a nuisance or dangerous building and must be secured. Before I start, I have a question for, before you start, I have a question for all city council members. The building at 145 House Street is owned by Bertha AOT and Wilfred AOT. Additional parties in interest are the Federal National Mortgage Association, GMAC Mortgage Corporation, and Key Bank National Association. Does any city council member know the owners or any party in interest, or have knowledge about this matter, that means you could not fairly and impartially hear the facts and decide the matter based on the evidence presented at this hearing? Next, I will ask for the representatives of the parties in interest to introduce yourselves, including your name, address, and position. Are the owners of 145 House Street or their representative present tonight? Is another party of interest present?
Attorney Kerry Folsom for Federal National Mortgage Association.
And ma'am, if we could just ask you to go to the podium, thank you, for the purpose of the microphone. That's okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Attorney Kerry Folsom for Federal National Mortgage Association. They hold the first lien mortgage on this property.
Is another party of interest present? Now, I will discuss the procedures that the city council will follow in conducting this hearing as follows. First, any documents to be used in this proceeding will be marked as an exhibit. Mr. Acting Mayor, do you accept into evidence the planning and code enforcement departments previously provided Exhibits A through J?
Yes.
The presentation of evidence for the property will occur in the following order. City planning and code department staff will present an opening statement and relevant evidence regarding why they believe the structure at 145 House Street is a nuisance or dangerous building, and what remedies the council shall order. Following the completion of the planning and code enforcement's presentation, any party in interest will have an opportunity to present an opening statement and any relevant evidence they want the council to consider with regard to whether the structure at issue is a nuisance or dangerous building, and if so, what remedy the council shall order. Any party of interest can then ask questions of staff and their, and any witnesses they bring. Staff can then ask questions, questions of any party in interest and any witnesses they present. Staff can then make additional comments regarding any party in interest presentation. Any party in interest can then make additional comments regarding the presentation of staff. City council members can then ask questions of the planning and code enforcement department, a party in interest, or a witness. Finally, each side can then make closing remarks of not more than two minutes each. Only parties to these hearings will be allowed to dissipate. Comments from the public will not be taken. After all information has been presented, the record will be closed. The city council will deliberate and vote on whether the structure in question is a nuisance or dangerous building. If the council determines that the structure is a nuisance or dangerous building, it must be secured, they shall deliberate and take a vote on the appropriate order to make to remedy the situation. This is an administrative hearing and not a court proceeding or trial. Therefore, the formal rules of evidence will not apply. The acting mayor will determine the appropriateness and admissibility on my advice as city attorney. Mr. Acting Mayor, turn it to you.
Yep. I'm all cut. Very good. Comments for the staff? By all means.
Thank you, Counselor. The building at 145 House Street, which I'll refer to as a structure, is a vacant two-family dwelling owned by Bertha AOT and Wilfred AOT by virtual claim deed dated January 27th, 1997. The claim deed to Bertha AOT and Wilfred AOT is in your packets as Exhibit A. 145 House Street is identified as parcel ID RE 00006401 on the city of Lewiston tax maps. A portion of the city tax maps and property information for the parcel ID is included in your packets as Exhibit B. Federal National Mortgage Association, GMAC Mortgage Corporation, and Key Bank National Association have encumbrances on the real estate at 145 House Street. On June 8th, 2021, a notice of this hearing was recorded in the Andrew Skoggan County Registry of Deeds Book 10765, page 288, a copy of which is included in your packets as Exhibit C. On June 8th, 2021, Bertha AOT was served with a notice of hearing, and that return of services in your packets as Exhibit D. On June 8th, 2021, Wilfred AOT was served with a notice of hearing, and that return of services in your packets as Exhibit E. On June 10th and 21st, 2021, Federal National Mortgage Association was served with a notice of hearing, and those returns of service are in your packets as Exhibit F. On June 12th and 14th, 2021, the successor of GMAC Mortgage Corporation was served with a notice of hearing, and those returns of service are in your packets as Exhibit G. On June 8th, 2021, Key Bank National Association was served with a notice of hearing, and that return of services in your packets as Exhibit H. Lewiston Code Enforcement Officer Ben Westman will describe the conditions at the property. After the party in interest presents its case, he will update the council regarding whether the party has demonstrated the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property.
I am City of Lewiston Code Enforcement Officer Benjamin Westman. My qualifications and certifications are located in your packets as Exhibit I. was included in tonight's packet, agenda packet. I ask that the city council accept David Hediger's memo into evidence as exhibit K, which he will give to you now.
I understand. Has anybody had the opportunity to look at them? In your opinion, as well as to the actions or the comments provided by the code enforcement Are those accepted as well?
So I think he has to.
Okay. Sure?
Yeah, it just asked me to.
Are you going through the area where you have the pictures and identify the damages? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah. On May 26, 2021, I visited the structure for a routine walkthrough. Coincidentally, I met two contractors there who were in the process of boarding up the structure at their quest of a mortgage holder. I explained that the structure may be subject to a dangerous buildings hearing that could result in the demolition of the property. I gave them my card and asked that the company reach out to me. On June 25, I visited the property, still unsecured. I asked two transients to leave. Trash and human waste continued to build up. I met with the preservation company at the property on Friday, July 2. The property was still unsecured. No progress had been made on the structural issues. Two used needles were found next to a burnt candle in the kitchen suggesting very recent drug use. As of today, the property remains unsecured with significant structural issues. There are several concerns for unsecured properties in our community when structures are abandoned, including arson, people being in unsecured buildings with the possibility of injury or death, the increased burden on police for surveillance and emergencies. All of these concerns are present here. This property is in a high-traffic area. It is across the street from a youth center and very close to an elementary school. Transients frequently enter the home as evidenced by the accumulation of human waste and drug paraphernalia. The Lewiston Police Department has responded to the property at least 10 times between February 2020 and the present. Earlier this month, LPD issued three trespass notices for transients on the property, and there continue to be concerns about drug use in the home. The fact that the property remains in this condition today demonstrates the parties in interest are unable and unwilling to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property. For all of those reasons, we ask that you adopt your proposed findings of fact and conclusion of law in order the structure to be demolished. Next, in the following slideshow, which is included in your packets as exhibit J and I, I will describe the conditions of 145 House Street that cause the structure to be dangerous or a nuisance. In addition to the slides, I will review here, your packet includes an appendix with additional pictures of the conditions of the property. Okay. Some technical issues, it appears. Can you guys see it? Oh.
Nope.
You guys get that?
Broken.
We're gonna try to get someone to come over.
Check the connections on the back, make sure they're solid.
I love technology.
Yeah, or maybe on the bottom.
Ben, pop the HDMI in.
Okay.
There you go. You'll have to excuse us, folks. After a year and a half of not being in this facility.
Nothing wants to work.
That's a good reason.
I know that the tech people have been working all week to try to get things working properly. But like in anything electronics, you can't count on it.
It's got the magic touch of the IT department.
I'll just walk away from the computer. Well, hold on, hold on. Because you said there's a delay, right? Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, it's a tiny delay. Laptop screen or whatever, it shouldn't go blank.
Okay. Don't touch it.
I'll let you touch the keys. Me and technology. Okay. Okay. We can.
All right.
What'd I say?
For good?
Oh, okay. How was I saying? I was like, did I do something wrong again? These are my qualifications. I have four years' experience as a state of Maine code enforcement officer and worked previously to that, three years as a housing inspector for the Lewiston Housing Authority. Access to the property, as I stated earlier, is still unsecured. Glass and windows shattered in front and back entrances. It's been unsecured since at least August 21, 2020. Constitutes a hazard due to safety, inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and abandonment is dangerous to the property. Accumulation of materials create increased fire load for the property. Evidence of smoking materials, as you note on the bottom slide, constitutes a fire hazard is also dangerous to life and property. Transients are accessing and inhabiting the property. Unsanitary conditions are being created due to the accumulation of human waste and drug paraphernalia, both pictured in these slide photos. Property has no water supply as the water meter has been removed due to burst pipes on February 22, 2021. Plumbing throughout the property has been disabled due to vandalism. Improper wiring and exposed electrical connections are throughout the property. Water has damaged electrical fixtures throughout the property and caused portions of the ceiling to collapse and deteriorate. Constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance and dilapidation is dangerous to the life and property. Water has infiltrated all floors due to frozen pipes and vandalism, leading to deteriorated conditions of the walls, ceilings, including the development of mold in the basement. This contributes to the development of unsanitary conditions. Constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and abandonment. It is dangerous to life and property. You have additional photos attached in your appendix for further showing interior deterioration. Furnace is no longer functional due to freezing and vandalism. On or about the February 22 timeframe, the city water district responded to the property due to running water service and noticed that the copper had been torn out of the building. The chimney shows signs of deterioration. Constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and obsolescence. It is dangerous to life and property. Foundation has started to spall, creating an unstable condition. This is dangerous to property as it leads to deterioration and potential collapse. It constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance and dilapidation. It is dangerous to life and property. The exterior is not being maintained, including broken windows, deteriorated porches, and garbage is scattered throughout the yard. This constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance and dilapidation. Again, you have additional photos in your appendix for conditions of the exterior of the property. Conclusion: The building is structurally unstable and unsanitary. The building constitutes a fire hazard. It constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment. It is dangerous to life or property. The building poses a serious threat to the public health and safety. For these reasons, the building is a nuisance or dangerous building and must be demolished. Our first proposed conclusion is that the structure has been unsecured for over 11 months and poses a serious threat to the public health and safety. As such, we ask that you adopt that portion of our proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law to order the structure to be secured. Second, we request that the council conclude that 145 House Street qualifies as a dangerous building for the following reasons. The foundation wall of the structure has started to spall, causing the building to be unstable. The exterior is not being maintained. The window panes are broken in the front and back doors. The porch is detached from the structure, and debris and garbage are scattered throughout the yard, creating a hazard to health or safety. Discarded household items and trash are strewn about the interior of the structure, including two used needles and evidence of smoking materials, causing fire loading and creating a hazard. Transients are accessing and apparently inhabiting the structure, creating unsanitary conditions. Water has infiltrated all floors due to frozen pipes and vandalism, resulting in deterioration of ceilings, walls, compromised electrical wiring and fixtures, and has led to the development of mold, creating a danger to life and property and constituting a danger to health or safety. The electrical wiring is improperly installed, inadequately maintained, and some electrical connections are exposed, creating a danger to health or safety. The structure has no water supply to the plumbing system throughout the structure, creating an unsanitary condition. The furnace is no longer functional, creating a danger to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, and obsolescence. The chimney shows signs of deterioration, creating a danger to life and property. The structure is unsuitable for the use to which it is put. The structure constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, and abandonment. The structure is abandoned and has not been secured since at least August 21, 2020, creating a serious threat to public health and safety. Any one of these reasons meets Maine's law standard for a dangerous building. Together, they pose a great danger to the public. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Following the staff's explanation, at this time, let's see, we'll have the opportunity to, hold on a second. Following the completion of the planning and code enforcement department's presentation, any party of interest will have an opportunity to present an opening statement and relevant evidence they want the city council to consider with regards to whether the structure at issue is a nuisance or dangerous building, and if so, what remedy the council shall order. Any party of interest? Ma'am?
Yes.
And again, who do you represent, if you don't mind?
I'm attorney for Federal National Mortgage Association. They hold the first lien mortgage on this home.
Thank you.
Am I ready to go? Okay.
You're ready to go.
I don't have too much information about or comments about what is obviously a dangerous building. It's very clear, looking at the photos and the information. Like I said, I'm a resident of Lewiston, I own a home here, and I know exactly where this property is located. But what I wanted to do is give you a little bit of information about these folks and how the history of this mortgage has evolved. This mortgage is not in foreclosure. They were in arrears for 2013, and in 2014 filed a Chapter 13 bankruptcy, which, unlike most Chapter 13 bankruptcies, was actually successful. Even though they didn't reside in this property, they reside elsewhere in this area in Lewiston, the loan was actually brought current in December of 2019, so they're only in arrears for January of 2020. Of course, then everybody knows what happened in March of 2020, and because this is a Fannie Mae loan, it could not be referred to foreclosure. Once the CARES Act was enacted, everything stopped. The CARES Act has recently been extended. It ends now finally, July 31, end of this month, but it extends to December 31 if the loans were less than 120 days in arrears, which would basically be the November payment for 2019. It extends that through December 31. This property is vacant, but Fannie Mae takes an absolute strict policy when it comes to properties. They require the affidavit of abandonment, which was part of a new statute in 2019 to be filed with the court in order to certify that a property is abandoned and full remediation can be undertaken. Unfortunately, because of the CARES Act moratorium, we can't start the foreclosure and we can't file the affidavit. So we're sort of in a rock and a hard place cycle. The issue is, is that when the Abandoned and Vacant Properties Act was enacted at the end of 2019, it requires a court filing in order for the presumption of abandonment, and that's what Fannie Mae requires in order to do anything other than absolutely remedial, which is basically this property management company was told you can board up broken windows and that's it. So that's what they've done. And unfortunately, the effect of that statute, it was to protect overzealous property companies from taking over properties that weren't vacant. And it's very specific. I'm sure the code enforcement officer has been out to several different properties. I know there is an affidavit that was signed on this property, but the foreclosure hasn't been filed, so it can't be filed in the court. And the bank and Fannie Mae takes the position that only absolute remedial steps can be done, which would be basically boarding a broken window. I know more windows have been broken. They were out as recently as June 26 to do some work, and from my understanding of what the code officer explained, that even those steps have been bypassed by trespassers or what have you. So the bank would like to be able to undertake preservation of the property, but they're sort of caught right now between the statute and the CARES Act and the inability to start the foreclosure and get the affidavit filed. They're not sure what they're going to do. They do have bids out with vendors, whether it's worthwhile to try and remediate. It's a different property management company than commonly works here in Lewiston, so we're hoping that they're able to get something, whether it's viable for repair or whether it's going to end up being torn down completely. They are aware that it's urgent. Demolition is more difficult to do in the winter, so that they know that the city is focused. As I said, I'm a resident of Lewiston, and I'm all for remediating dangerous, you know, neighborhood-crushing properties, especially where this one is so near to a youth center. So my client is doing the best that it can in a difficult situation, and we're just hoping that we're able to work with code enforcement to come up with something that satisfies what everybody needs. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question. Is there any other parties of interest in attendance this evening? Okay. Hearing is not seeing any. If you wish, ma'am, you may ask questions of the code enforcement staff with three guys as to the property, if questions you may have.
No, I didn't have any questions. I had the opportunity to read the materials and the agenda online today, and I have several copies of my client's property company's reports, and they pretty much jive with what the code enforcement officer has stated. As to the physical condition, it's quite horrible, it's dangerous, obviously something needs to be done. So I didn't have any questions for him.
Okay, thank you. Next, the planning enforcement department can ask questions of the party of interest or any witnesses present, if they wish to do so. David?
Thank you. I'm not sure that I necessarily have any questions for Ms. Folsom as much as just some general comments. While service was made, I believe, to the bank that Ms. Folsom represents back in June and on the 10th and the 21st, this is really the first time we've had this information shared with us. So I'm not sure when Ms. Folsom was fully made aware of the condition of this property. But as she stated and as Ben mentioned, this property is, you know, right across the street from a school, from a youth center. We know that there's illicit activity going on in there. The property management company, whether they're new to the community or not, has been less than responsive. You've seen the correspondence. It's rather disappointing. I don't think they even really understand the severity of the problem or understand what's going on with the property there. And unfortunately, that's not unusual when you're dealing with these out-of-state or out-of-town property management companies. It's third, fourth parties are moved, and they don't really know what's going on with the property or the severity of the conditions there. As we've stated, and as I've mentioned with other condemnations that we brought before you, our goal isn't necessarily to demolish buildings. I mean, we try to provide as much time as we can. We work with people, even though some people might not. We work with people, even though some people might not think that. We try to work with people to the greatest extent possible to try to save a structure. I think it's safe to say, from staff's perspective, we don't really have any interest in saving this structure, given its proximity there, the unresponsiveness, the activities that are going on there. It's unfortunate situation. Yeah, it's, it could be, you know, you could save anything, I suppose, with enough resources and money, but folks haven't been responsive, I realize. COVID has made that a little more challenging, you know, as far as the filing of different paperwork and whatnot. I'm not sure that we want to, how much longer we want to allow this property to remain abandoned out there in effort to have somebody try to save it. Thank you.
Thank you. So other than comments, you have no questions for the parties?
No.
Okay. Now, the code enforcement department, can they make additional comments regarding any party's interests in the presentation?
No, I think we're all set.
All set.
Counselor.
Okay. Any party of interest can make additional comments regarding the presentation of the planning and code enforcement. I have a nod. No?
No, I have nothing further, other than we were retained about three days ago, Friday morning. So that's why, just rushing in at the eleventh hour, so I apologize.
Kind of difficult. Thank you. Okay. Each side can then do their closing remarks, not more than two minutes each, if you wish.
I had nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President. No.
Okay. Thank you.
No further comments.
Thank you. Yep. After all information has been presented, the record will be closed. The city council will deliberate and take a vote on whether the structure in question is a nuisance or dangerous building. If the council determines that the structure is a nuisance or dangerous building and must be secured, it shall deliberate and take a vote on the appropriate order to be made to remedy the situation. If you'll excuse me one moment, I thought I saw here, yes, I passed one. It said city council members may then ask questions of the planning code enforcement department, if you wish, and/or the party of interest, if you wish.
Mr. President?
Any questions?
Two questions for Director Hediger. First of all, the property management, that's guardian asset?
Correct.
Impressive. The next question would be with regards to the interior of the building, not having looked at the inside of it. I don't know whether you or Officer Westman can answer this. What is the likelihood that could be successfully rehabilitated within a reasonable cost? I mean, it looks like it's in pretty shabby condition on the inside. The foundation is going?
We were in the one building today to see that it was unsecured. There's two single-family dwellings on this property. The one has been secured at this point. The one to the rear still remains unsecured. Ceiling has collapsed in it. Is that the one that has the foundation issues in it, or is it the one in the front? So the rear one has the foundation issues. Okay. I think, you know, as I mentioned, if someone is willing to put enough money into it, it's just whether or not the economics really makes sense in order to save the structure out there, you know? I'm sure, given the age of the building, there's lead in it, so I mean, there's going to be, that's going to have to be addressed out there. Most of the plumbing has been ripped out of it, you know?
Wiring, everything's going to have, it's going to have to be gutted and replaced.
Exactly. And I'm assuming the same holds true for the building in the front?
Yeah. The front building is in pretty similar condition.
And does, if I am not mistaken, the significant exposure to surrounding buildings in the neighborhood?
It's a corner lot. Again, it's directly across the street. It is-
House them about 20, 25 feet of this, I think?
Oh, easily. Yeah, yeah, 20 feet, yeah.
So it is a fire hazard to the neighborhood as well, then?
Absolutely. I mean, that's part of the concern is that, you know, we have vacant buildings in town that are secured, and that's okay sometimes, you know, as long as the building is secured and it's not, you know, deteriorating and whatnot. But when you have a property that's continuing to be vandalized, continuing to be broken into, having this type of activity in it, that's not a good reflection for that community, for that area of the neighborhood. As we've indicated, it poses a threat. It's a dangerous building.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at the timeline here, I know it was mentioned that there may have been some issues during the pandemic, you know, financially. It did mention that the water was shut off to the property in October 2019, so based on everything you guys have seen, did it seem like issues were happening much before the pandemic? So it didn't really affect you?
The property has been kind of in deteriorated state. It used to have a fence with on the property line that kind of obscured kind of the overgrowth, the debris. That fence got to the point of such deterioration that it fell into the city sidewalk, so the city had to kind of chuck it back on to the property with no avail to get the property owners to take care of it. So it's been deteriorating for, for a little bit. As Attorney Folsom mentioned, the current Bertha and Wilford A.O. do still reside in Lewiston, but they, for intensive purpose, kind of just walked away because they couldn't take care of the property anymore due to the size of the property and their age, so. But yeah, the deterioration has, I would say, 18, 19 is kind of when it started to really kind of escalate.
Okay. I know it was mentioned that there may have been some restrictions on the homeowners, that they weren't allowed to fix up everything, like some federal restrictions. Is that, do those restrictions also apply to, like, maintaining the yard, keeping the grass at level, or picking, like, litter up in the yard?
There's nothing that keeps, from a, from a local perspective, there's nothing that keeps anybody from making any improvements to their property out there. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you spoke with the owners at one point throughout this whole process, I believe, right?
Yes.
So they haven't really had any interest or, you know, resources to be able to take care of the property out there. The guardian asset management that was referenced, they're the ones that have been making communication, and it's not clear that they, and it's not clear that they even know that they're communicating with us based upon some of the comments and correspondence that we received. You know, certain things, as you mentioned, you know, weeds. They went out there and mowed the lawn. Never mind that the building was totally unsecured out there, you know? Okay, thank you, but there's other issues that need to be addressed.
I just wanted to echo, kind of, or go off what Dave would say, as far as the documented that they had mowed the yard. You know, they took very skewed photos of what they did to make it appear as though they did the yard, and, you know, leaving large amounts of debris, tall grass in one spot, you know? So it, as David was saying earlier, it's just, I would say disappointing as far as their ability or their representation of maintaining the property, you know, because when they contact me, I'm, great, somebody's doing something, the property's maintained. You go out and it's something completely different, so.
Okay. And also, I appreciate the emphasis, considering the proximity to Tree Street Youth Center, Longley School, the Coliseum, so anyone coming into Lewiston is going to drive right by there. And of course, with the new sidewalks and everything, any high school students walking into the high school going by there, so I think that's also important to note, too. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. I was just going to make the same comment as Counselor Jensen. I walk that street all the time with my little brother, drive by there all the time. There's so many youth populated in that area, and for that building, you know, for the activities that take place, it's just completely, should not be happening. So if you can take it down immediately, then we can. Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Any other questions from counsel? I guess, I guess my, yes. My situation would be at this time is to go, to go through this aspect of it. What I'm looking at is for some kind of recommendation from the code enforcement with regards as to action to be taken, and also whether or not, if the council would vote on those recommendations, if the code enforcement department would continue in some manner of working with the owners to see if anything else can be accomplished. Am I making sense?
You're making sense.
Thank you.
So I believe-
Low Ray?
Yes, I did have a question. So if we proceed, what would the timeline be per your recommendations to answer Counselor Glead's question?
So upon you folks making favorable findings of fact that the building is in fact a dangerous structure and that we proceed with it, typically the property owner, property representative, they have 30 days to work with us to come up with a reasonable plan, rehabilitation plan, where something can be submitted to us that shows that they actually have the capacity, the interest, and, you know, the wherewithal to actually save this property, this structure out there. So I suppose that's a possibility. I mean, that's something that we actually have done with some properties in the past, where we've struck of a deal after working with you folks, where you have actually found the building to be dangerous, but then we've worked with them afterwards to save it. Sometimes we've been successful, other times we have not been. So that's certainly an option that remains after this. 30 days from there on out, no, we would proceed to, you know, look to demolish the building.
And can you just, I think this might be the first or second dangerous building hearing for this set of counselors. It is my recollection, I just want to check this with you, that the folks who come forward with plans are folks who actually show up to these hearings for the most part and are advocating for their buildings. It seems that the owners are not here and have admitted that they can't really take care of it, so who would you be talking about with, the property management company?
That's a good question. You know, I suppose, you know, a party not here that somehow represents an interest in the property, if they were able to put together a reasonable rehabilitation plan for us, sure, we'll take it into consideration. But certainly, yeah, we only have one representative here this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Clemmons?
Question, Director. Can the property owner waive that 30-day period if they have no interest in it whatsoever? If they have no intention of doing anything, can they just say, hey, we're out?
That's, I don't know. I probably defer to the attorney on that.
They, any party of interest could waive that 30-day period?
Including the owner.
Including the owner. The challenge is that they, in this case, each would have to waive it in order for the period to go by.
Each party of interest?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So basically, what you basically related to us, and now just go over it, is the building is structurally unstable and unsanitary. The building constitute a fire hazard. It constitutes a hazard to health and safety due to inadequate maintenance. Yeah. Obsolescence, obsolescence. Yeah. Pretty bad. Or abandonment. Thank you. It is dangerous to life or property, and the building poses a serious threat to the public health and safety. And for those reasons, the building, in your explanation and what I'm getting from it, I'm not sure about the rest of the council, the building is a nuisance and dangerous, and the building must be demolished.
That is our recommendation.
Are you, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I believe, I believe now that the city council should deliberate and take a vote as to whether the structure in question is a nuisance or dangerous building. If the council determines that the structure is a nuisance or dangerous building and must be secured, it shall deliberate and take a vote on the appropriate order to be made to remedy the situation. I do have a question. My last statement here was that building must be demolished, and within this aspect that I just read, it stated the building was dangerous and must be secured. What's the difference? I know one has to be demolished and the other one secured, but which one are you recommending the most of?
Well, immediately, we'd need the building to be secured. That's something that we've been asking for, for months now at this point.
And that would be by paneling the windows and doors?
Correct.
Any openings, period?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be followed by, again, should the council take action on that? Finding that the building is dangerous, resulting in the demolition of the structure?
Very good. So the end product is actually demolition. Should no one come forward to try to work something out?
That's correct.
Okay. Just so that the council understands. Counselor Clemmons?
Does the city have the authority to secure that building and bill the parties of interest?
The code has proposed an order, and that, and that does include that authority. And billing the parties of interest and potentially assessing the special taxes is a, under statute provides how that must happen.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that with regard to the property at 145 Howe Street, to adopt the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and order of demolition proposed by the city planning and code enforcement department, which order establish, establish the corrective action to be taken by the property owner and the timeframe for taking such action, and which authorizes the city administrator to take such corrective action if the property owner fails to do so, and to recoup the city's costs through a special tax or collective action.
I would second that motion, Mr. President.
Okay. A motion by Counselor Ray and seconded by Counselor Clemmons. Do I have to go to the public for, no?
No, not for a condemnation here.
Not for this one? Okay. No further questions from the council? A roll call vote? Is that in order?
It is, if everyone's all set with their discussion.
Everyone seems to be all set, I believe. Yes?
Sure. Okay, great. Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
And word seven? Oh, I'm sorry. Word six, sorry. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. Sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Thank you for standing by me, everyone.
Those ones are tough.
Greatly appreciated. Okay. Item number eight.
Item number eight, resolved, to initiate a zoning map amendment, zone change for the property located at 143 Lincoln Street. Requested action to approve the resolve to initiate the zoning of 143 Lincoln Street to allow a density of housing that will make the project economically viable, have staff in the planning board work with the building owner to change the zoning to meet the needs and goals of the owner and city, and to make a recommendation on the proposed changes to the city council for further action. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any comments from the council? Comments from the public? None. Counsel, back to counsel? Nothing? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Sorry. Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Item number nine.
Item number nine, order accepting and appropriating the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Requested action to approve the order to accept and appropriate the American Rescue Plan Act funds.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Counselor Ray, a second by Counselor Pettenhill. To the council for discussion? Yes. Counselor Ray.
Director Hunter, I just have a question about the first appropriation and what it's labeled as hazard pay bonuses. Could you explain what that means and how we're intrining that with all of our contracts?
Yes, the Rescue Plan Act does allow for various hazard pay. We've elected in lieu of paying it on a per-hour basis to do it as a bonus, so that's why it's captioned as such.
Thank you so much.
Any other question? Yes.
I have another, well, a comment slash a question. So a few councils ago, I asked about, like, the swimming pool at Kennedy Park, if, like, the funding can be used to hire someone and/or, like, to do that swimming pool again. Are we able to do that? Is that in here?
Right now, based upon how I've interpreted the four qualifications, that would not qualify for that project.
Thank you. Is there other ways that we can fund that swimming? Because it's extremely important for our community and for the youth. There's a young girl who died, you know, because she drowned, so, and instead of kids living outside the community, this, they can just go to Kennedy Park and swim using the swimming pool. So is there, like, ways we can find funding?
I believe not, funding is not the only issue. The probably larger issue is securing lifeguards at this point in the summer. There is a massive shortage of lifeguards, so that was probably the bigger issue. I know they are working on opening up the splash pad, and I believe they've increased the hours on that recently.
And they're attempting, they're attempting to hire attendants for that splash pad as well, so I think it is a hiring issue, as Director Hunter's correct on that. I believe that's been the biggest challenge.
Thank you. I did, thank you, I didn't know that. It's really helpful. That's it.
Okay. Anyone else from the council? Okay. From the public? Nothing from the public? Okay, back to the city council. Any further questions? We'll take a roll call vote.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Item number 10.
Item number 10, order accepting and appropriating the American Rescue Plan Act funds through the Maine State Library. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the library director to apply for and accept American Rescue Plan Act formula grant funding through the Maine State Library.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Jensen. And we have someone who is presenting, I believe.
Hello. I'm Marcela Perez, the library director. So the Maine State Library has received funding through the ARPA and the American Rescue Plan Act, and they are allocating some of this to formula grants given to each public library in Maine. Lewiston's eligible for $4,500. And so the library is proposing that we use this formula grant for an accessibility audit of the library's website to begin planning to improve the accessibility of the site as required under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Website and accessibility improvements are allowable funding categories under this grant. So I just wanted to add here that the library's website functions as more or less a digital branch. It's open even when the library isn't. It makes resources and information to the community available 24/7. And use of the digital services on the website during the pandemic increased 49%. So we know that it's a need, we know it's getting used, and we just want to make sure that it's usable by folks of all abilities.
Thank you.
Great.
Questions from the council? Yes. Counselor Ray.
Will this audit also consider mobile-friendly services on the library website? I feel like we found out that most folks access the internet through their phones at this point.
The library's website is currently mobile-ready. It is accessible that way, but that will be part of it, is determining whether that's accessible from an ADA perspective.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any further questions from the council? From the public? Again, back to the council. Hearing and seeing none. Roll call vote, please, Kathy.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 11.
Item number 11, order authorizing a change to the fiscal year 2022 municipal garage vehicle replacement list. Requested action to approve the resolve modifying the vehicle and equipment replacement list from one full sidewalk, from, I'm sorry, from one full-size sidewalk tractor to two smaller units.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Calley?
Yes.
Hey, very good. Thank you. Any questions from the city council? From the public? Back to the council? I had a question, but apparently the Public Works Director is she, oh, okay. So. We're gonna, we're gonna buy two smaller units so they can maneuver more easily within the confines of downtown.
Correct.
Currently, you have that money allocated for a larger unit that would be doing the sidewalks outside of downtown? Is that what currently the plan was?
So, I'm Kevin Gagny, Deputy Director Utilities for Public Works. In talking with Mary Ann, she couldn't be here tonight, the background that I got was this unit, they're used on all sidewalks. And we found, listening to the crews as well as the foreman, there are a lot of sidewalks throughout the city, but definitely downtown, that it's difficult to get this size unit to pass the sidewalk, so we can clear all the sidewalks. So the smaller units will be more utilized in those tight spaces.
So you'd be talking about the guidelines like that come off the post?
Retaining walls, fire hydrants, telephone poles, all of those, that do encroach on the width of the sidewalk, absolutely.
Okay, okay, so actually, it's more than, than just downtown that you can use it. It's universal.
It really is.
However, with the confines of the sidewalks downtown, it's more appropriate there. Okay, that's what I had. I'm all set. Any other questions from the council? Hearing and seeing none, can go for a roll call vote.
Sure. Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 12.
Item number 12, resolve budget transfer from the Continental Mill Riverwalk to the Cody Street and Alfred A. Plord Parkway Recreation Conversion Projects. Requested action to approve the resolve adopting the budget transfer of $180,000 from the Continental Mill Riverwalk to the Cody Street and Alfred A. Plord Parkway Recreation Conversion Projects.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Calley and a second by Counselor Ray. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, yeah, I want to emphasize that I'm supportive of this, and just for the public's sake, if they're a little bit confused about this, it's not ending the other project, it's just we're kind of aligning what we need to take care of first, and so nothing's being taken off the plate, so as long as nobody worries, you know, we're very much moving forward with the projects. So just wanted to clarify that.
I also have a comment. We're looking at rezoning, it's 143 Lincoln Street, which is the Dominican block, if I'm not mistaken, and we're going to establish living quarters there for a number of apartments, plus, I believe, commercial downtown, downstairs. We, we're building up that area, and I know the Continental Mill has also got plans for redevelopment, and it won't be for a couple of years. Will taking money away from the riverfront building area, put anything in the, in the behind in the projects? You know what I'm saying? In other words, we're building the area up, but yes, we're taking monies away for that particular area. It seems that we're lengthening that, that riverfront program every single year. And, you know, I, in my opinion, I think it's time that we address that area. I know there's a lot of other areas that have to be addressed, but I think a plan came out 10 years or better ago, and we don't even have a ramp built into the canal to facilitate cleaning the canals, and that was mentioned two years ago. So I guess that's where I'm at, Kevin.
Yep. Talked with Mary Ann on this earlier, because I'm getting up to speed on some of these that aren't necessarily in utilities. The plan is, like Counselor Jensen said, to hit the priorities that have a timely need right now, which is related to the school and recreation in those parcels, and then get back to this when we can. We do have issues with, as was mentioned earlier, contract availability, just getting the work done as well, so we're trying to shift that and we'll come back to those.
All right.
Can I help you a little bit, too? The two projects that we're doing, that we're moving the money to, are under a regulatory, a regulatory mandate to have those done in 2023, three years after approval. Those are, the reason they're called conversion projects, building the high school and removing the pool down at the fire station on, on Canal Street, Lincoln Street, sorry, Lincoln Street Fire Station. Those were previously funded with federal parks lands funds, and removal of those, those were in perpetuity. We have to replace those projects. The Hudson soccer field that's being built as we speak right now is one of them, replacing those recreational opportunities. These two are replacing them, and there is that deadline through the National Park Service. The stuff on the riverfront, we've moved a lot of the money over to, closer to the canal to prepare for some of the development, like the Continental Mill, like LA Museum, and that, we've talked about another opportunity down at Pump House A. So they're really focusing on infrastructure this year, getting it ready for those developments. Then we'll come back and build these amenities second, and kind of in line. So it's aligning with regulatory goals and our regulatory mandates, and aligning with being prepared for the right development at the right time.
Thank you. The reason I ask the question is basically to get the information that you just delivered out to the public, which many times they don't get the whole story, and at least now they have an explanation and reasoning behind the actions taken. So I appreciate that time. Thank you very much, both of you. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Kathy, we'll do a roll call vote.
Sure. Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 13.
Item number 13, order authorizing the allocation and disbursement of $45,000 CDBG public facilities funding to the YMCA and $9,750 to Promise Early Education. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the allocation and disbursement of $45,000 in CDBG public facilities funding to the YMCA and $9,550 to Promise Early Education.
So moved. Second.
I have, yes, move from Counselor Calley and a second from Counselor Ray. Any discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing none, the public, none from the public. Back to the council. Roll call vote, please, Kathy.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Item number 14.
Item number 14, resolve authorizing the process for creating a revised public art plan for the city of Lewiston. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the process for creating a revised public art plan for the city of Lewiston.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, motion from Counselor Ray and a second from Counsel Jelineus. Any discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing none, the public. And we have a presentation.
I just wanted to quickly say, Heidi McCarthy, Economic Development Specialist, this item came to you for workshop in June as a result of the public art plan that we adopted in 2019, and some gaps we found that needed to be addressed. LA Arts is willing to be a partner on this and find funding for it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the public? No questions from the public. Back to the council. No questions from the council. Kathy, roll call vote, please.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 15, please.
Item number 15, order authorizing the process for acquiring public art for the choice neighborhood. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the process for acquiring public art for the choice neighborhood.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion from Counselor Ray, a second from Counselor Jensen. Questions from the council? None. From the public? We don't have any. Back to the council. I, again, I do have something. I noticed in here that the items will be put in place and so on in the neighborhood. Who, the projects will be on city-owned and maintained, and will be installed mostly on city-owned property. Where are we getting the funds, number one, to offset the cost of Public Works to, to maintain these items? Is there room in a grant or anything like that that would offset that cost? The reason I'm asking you is that we're lacking personnel at Public Works, and if we're going to start taking care of these items, which I believe in totally, what's going to end up happening is we're going to take from PETA, which is jobs that have to be done on the outskirts possibly, to bring personnel in to take care of the maintenance of these projects. And it just bothers me that we have to do that, and, and there's really no way of compensating the city, you know, with some type of funding to offset the cost. So I, that's my concern. So probably a personal situation, but.
No, it's, I hear your concern, and it's something that Public Works, that we've talked about with Public Works also, and Mary Ann will be coming to you, the Public Works Director will be coming to you in August, or perhaps a little later, to do a workshop on if we are looking at these, these types of projects and keeping up this great momentum that we have for public art, what Public Works may need to be able to do that maintenance. Unfortunately, in, within the choice, planning an action grant, maintenance was not an eligible activity for, for the funds, and so it couldn't be used for that. But Public Works is supportive of these, and especially knowing that they're likely not going to be installed, at least the, many of them, until next summer, that there is time to plan for that and think about how we can support the maintenance of, not just these, but all the public art we have coming within the budget cycle.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Any further comments, discussion from the council? Seeing none, roll call vote, Kathy.
Sure. Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Number 16, please.
Item number 16, order authorizing the installation of a public art piece to be located on city-owned property near 213 Lisbon Street, and execution of a memorandum of understanding between Munka Co-Working and the city of Lewiston. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the installation of a public art piece to be located on city-owned property between 213 Lisbon Street and execution of a memorandum of understanding between Munka Co-Working and city of Lewiston.[1703.31] of understanding between Munka Coworking and city of Lewiston.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Jelineus and a second from Counselor Ray. Any questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none, going to the public, none from the public, back to the council. Yes.
Is there a presentation that goes along with this? I don't think this one has, has it been presented to us in workshop?
This one was presented in workshop. It was very quick. It was in that last few minutes before we went into council, to the regular meeting. And I'm pleased to say we have the owner of Munka Coworking with us, Carl Shaline, to come on up and do a presentation about this project, and then...
And it's that one over there?
And it is that one over there. And happy to answer any questions you have also.
Just a quick comment. I know on, I think it's item H, which is the maintenance, I'm happy to see that any maintenance work must be pre-approved by Public Works, and all the maintenance to be taken care of by the parties doing the action.
And along those lines, it should be noted that the MOU in front of you does not have liability language yet. We are still working on that liability language, both for this project and for the next one. But what you see is largely what the MOU will do. And so happy to introduce Carl Shaline, owner of Munka Coworking.
Yes. Would you like to make comments?
I would, thank you.
Your name, please.
I'm sorry?
Your name.
Yes, my name is Carl Shaline. I live at 11 Morris Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. And I'm here this evening representing Munka, a coworking space on Lisbon Street. The concept for this project was a collaborative effort between myself and Munka's manager, Julia Zimirova. She couldn't be here this evening, but Julia sends you her best. As we were working to reopen Munka, we wanted to do something fun and exciting. Julia and I came up with this idea over a phone call in the span of a few minutes. We both love the color yellow, and this concept is fun and whimsical and almost believable. You can see here with the nearly finished bench and a river of paint flowing down the sidewalk, our working title is, damn, we were almost finished. The footprints and paw prints on the ground are going to be Julia's and her dog Fiji. We also wanted to thank Melini and Tyrion of Wicked Illustrations, who will be the artists for this project and who did an amazing job on this canvas. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Counselor Ray.
Super excited about it. One question related to what we just addressed with Deputy Director Gagny. Will the sidewalk be able to be snow piled around this? Because it's a 3D can, right?
I'm sorry?
Because the can will be sticking out of the sidewalk.
No, no, no. It's completely painted. There's no...
Oh, it's 3D somewhere, didn't it?
The painting will be 3D, but there will be, there'll be nothing to trip over, I can assure you.
Great. That was a misunderstanding. My apologies.
I also want to note that Public Works came and did a site visit with Carl, and I was also there, which is where a lot of the MOU language came from, and also we discussed many of the maintenance and, or maintenance concerns that might come up.
Yes.
Not a question, but just, you know, a thanks to you, Carl, for bringing something so wonderful and positive to the city. I just, I love every part of it and just big supporter of this, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
I love that painting. It really stands out. Really nice. Any further questions from the council? Thank you so much for taking the time and your presentation. Appreciate it. Kathy, roll call vote, please.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Number 17.
Item number 17, and I will just note for the council that we did leave a substitute copy, a replacement copy on your desk this evening. There's just a minor change. Instead of just Dufrane Plaza, the statement was added, or other city-owned property agreed to between the artist and the city. So I just want to point out that with some of the paperwork on your desk this evening. So it is really a substitute order that we provided for you. So item number 17, order authorizing the installation of a public art mural to be located on city-owned property in Dufrane Plaza or other city-owned property agreed to between the artist and city, an execution of the memorandum of understanding between Main Arts Commission and/or a sign and the city of Lewiston. Requested action: To approve the order authorizing the installation of a public art mural to be located on city-owned property in Dufrane Plaza or other city-owned property agreed upon between artist and city, an execution of the memorandum of understanding between Main Arts Commission and/or a sign and the city of Lewiston.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counselor Jelineus and a second by Counselor Ray. Any questions from the city council? Yes, Counselor Ray.
Why might we be moving away from Dufrane Plaza?
Sure. I want to note, both the artist and PW are very confident that there's going to be no problem. But we have a site visit on the 16th, this Friday, with the artist, L.A. Arts and Public Works to really look at it, and I'll be there and be able to touch it and, you know, just make sure that it's going to work. So in the unlikely event that one or both parties decide that the fountain isn't actually going to work, we wanted the option to be able to consider another city-owned site so that we could keep the mural in Lewiston.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Are there questions from the council? Public? No. Back to the council. Hearing seeing none, roll call vote, please, Kathy.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number 18, please.
Item number 18, resolve authorizing the waiver of various permit and license fees to support the Downtown Street Festival following the Bicentennial Maine State Parade. Requested action: To approve the resolve authorizing the waiver of various permit and license fees to support the Downtown Street Festival following the Bicentennial Maine State Parade.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Clement and a second from Counselor Jensen. Any questions or concerns from the board or from the council? Public? Back to the council. If I may, I would like to make a comment. Again, I guess it's probably just myself, but it calls on the city council orders to resolve the first paragraph, authorizing a waiver of various permits and licenses. That particular paragraph does not specify. It leaves it out in the open that you could probably put anything on it. However, the last paragraph, which I believe, are two separate paragraphs, that the city waived the license and permit fees regarding food vendors outside entertainment and sound Is that the same thing?
It really, yes, it really is, Counselor. These are the types of permits that would be needed for this type of event. When we received that presentation from the Downtown Association a little bit ago, these are the type of functions that they're looking to have down there, the food and the live music.
All right. And I do know it's going to generate revenue within the city. We also have to think of paying the overtime for Public Works Police and Fire if need be with regards to that. I do know that we allocated money for that, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, correct.
However, my concern is still the fact that it's, we're investing in the community, yes. However, our return within that investment, in my opinion, is not sufficient for the cost incurred. I hope I'm making sense, but that, those are my concerns. Again, it seems like many times we tend to give stuff away and hoping in return that we have something that comes back, which many times we do, however, many times is shorthanded. So I think those are concerns that should be voiced at times, and I thought I'd do it tonight. Thank you. Okay. Any further questions from the council? From the public? Back to the council. Roll call vote, please, Kathy.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. Item number 19, which is reports and updates. Counselor Ray, I see you have your hand up.
I do, usually, perpetually. So the school committee met last night and a couple points of interest coming forward. So the state just approved 55% funding, which was supposed to be happening all along, but has not for a very long time, for education. And this will result in an increase of $1.5 million for the school system. We approved the potential appropriation of these funds for finally getting back to the administrative structure that we had some years ago with having a superintendent, assistant superintendent, someone overseeing academics, and then someone overseeing administration. And so part of that funding will go towards that. We're also going to work to pull back some of the recurring expenses that ended up in COVID funds, so pulling those back into the general fund or into this funding, just so that we don't approach the cliff that we all talked about relentlessly for weeks. I won't bore you with that. We also passed a number of policies in order to bring our policy manual in line with a local resolution where we no longer allow for expulsion of elementary-level students. They can be expelled for bomb threats and other weapons of violence as prescribed through state and federal law, but there are a number of situations where expulsion is not an option for them anymore. I believe that's it, even though it took a long time last night.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Item number 20, any other business councilors or others may have relating to the Lewiston City Government. Gentlemen, ladies?
And I, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Kewee can go first.
Thank you. I wanted to bring forward, Dennis and Dale know of this already, but a constituent reached out because his car got towed, and I'm wondering if we can do like a future workshop and/or, you know, some sort of discussion regarding like organs change, if the police department can take care of all towing instead of private company or some other towing out, you know, in the city. Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kelly.
Mr. Council President, if I could just point, I just noticed that I renumbered incorrectly, so I apologize. So we also left on your place setting an item that we would like the council to consider under other business, and I labeled it 21, which is executive session, so I'm sorry, I should have labeled it 20 under other business. Just asking the council to please consider repealing a previous vote and re-adopting it this evening. There was an error in the order regarding the sale of 12 and 14 Ann Street. The incorrect bidder was listed, so we'd just like to have that clarified for the record.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, Mr. Council President, the document before you would be an item for other business. The subject is to suspend the council rules and to add an item to the agenda regarding the order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps to sell the city-owned property at 12 Ann Street and 14 Ann Street. And the requested action, there are two items for requested action. The first one is to suspend the city council rules and to add an item to the agenda for consideration and action at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Counselor Clements and a second from Counselor Jensen to move that forward.
Thank you. And if there's no discussion, we can do the roll call? If there's no discussion?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Please.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. The next item for requested action is to repeal the order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps to sell the city-owned properties at 12 Ann Street and 14 Ann Street as adopted at the June 15, 2021 city council meeting, and to adopt the corrected order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps to sell the city-owned properties at 12 Ann Street and 14 Ann Street as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Counselor Clements, second by Counselor Jensen, and yes, Counselor Ray.
Can, do you know what the vote number was for that on the 15th?
It was vote number 141 on page seven. The language, the name in the order from last month, the bidder was David Dimonan, and that was incorrect. That was the other bidder, so we just needed to have this order corrected.
Okay.
And we did watch the tape, Counselor, and you did inquire.
Okay, I feel like I asked about this.
You did inquire, and we reviewed it.
The things I hold on to, I don't know why.
Yes, I apologize. We reviewed it after the fact and realized that it was a staff error, so we just needed to have it corrected before the sale could proceed.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Very good. Any further questions? Hearing and seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
One of the last items would be a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. President, if I might.
Yes, Counselor.
Under other business, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this being the 13th of the month, the 14th of the month, brings about the date that our deputy city administrator will be leaving us.
Yes.
Okay? I hate to see him go, and I think we owe him a debt of gratitude for what he's done with the city in his time as both the Public Works Director and the Deputy City Administrator. And he's going to leave a position that's going to be hard to fill. Wish him the best of luck with his endeavors. I don't know that he's chosen to release where he's going yet. He did tell me in a conversation recently, but I wish him the best, and the people that are picking him up have got a great asset coming to them. Thank you very much, Dale. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you so much.
Very much appreciate it.
Now, let's see if we can stay later. Let's move into the bench room now.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Okay. Motion from Counselor Khalid and a second from Counselor Clements to go into executive session. Roll call vote, please. Can we do that?
And I was just going to clarify what the motion was. Thank you, Counselor. To enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title I, Section 405, 6A, to discuss a personnel matter.
I was too anxious to go into executive session.
I'm so excited.
Okay. Any questions? No, I don't believe so. All in favor? And a roll call vote.
We'll do a quick roll call, sure. Motion from, Counselor from word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
And word six?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Question for you, Kathy?
Yes.
Am I, are we going to come back out here after the executive session?
No, you can, you can just adjourn back there, yes.
I'll take them.
We will be turning off the camera once you start executive session.
And what I'll do is I'll give you the information as to when I come out.
Sure, that'd be great.
Well, not when I come out, but tomorrow or whatever.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Counselor.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. We're going into executive session.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for having me.